Welcome, welcome back. It's been awhile. I actually missed you guys. I missed streaming. It's been a couple of days since I've made any videos. And we're here, emergency or special meeting of the Thornton Township. So, thank you for joining me courtesy of your favorite Survivor Vivian Allen. She is streaming. She's on location today. Looks like there's, I don't know, I don't think it's gonna be any Hanyard. Uh, I know that's what we're here for, but it looks like Tiffany Hainier is not going to be here. So, we're gonna check it out. I think this meeting's gonna probably start on time unlike the rest of the meetings. So, let's, let's get into it, see what's going on. And I appreciate you guys for coming in. We'll chat a little bit, all that good stuff. But let's see what's happening in the Thornton Township meeting.
You guys should really look into voting for. Uh, we have people that are running that have definitely voted for um, the superintendent to get five hundred thousand dollars almost in compensation for a school district that's failing. So, um, we definitely, we definitely have to make sure that we are paying attention to this election and who we put into office. Because if he get those right, yes people, that superintendent will get that raise. That superintendent needs another job. His contract has ended. He has not fulfilled his rights. We need to get rid of him.
Uh, I think I saw Stephanie earlier. Uh, I did, what's going on? I think I saw, I saw Steph. Yeah, she's all the way there actually. You know, let me, let me make myself a little smaller. There you go. So, yeah, she's at the far corner. So, I think they're about to start right now. Let's see.
A good view. Sorry. It's coming. I can't wait to figure that part out. And actually, my new um, device thing, I think I could stream YouTube through it. I just haven't played it. I gotta play around with lab, maybe tonight or something. I'll let you guys know.
Alright, they're still, they're still talking. Uh, the Dalton, I s- I've heard a little bit about that. I know, I'm actually, I'll be honest, I'm a little bit out of the loop in some of the election, election stuff. And so, I noticed some issues with the school district. I mean, how many school districts have problems? I mean, our kids are dumb. Everywhere, like our kids are struggling, especially what happened over the pandemic and the, the lack of resources and just, it's a lot going on. But I've heard of some crazy stuff. So, um, you know, if anything, just always email me, hit me up, let me know what's going on. Uh, what's going on Stephanie? So, appreciate everyone coming in. I was away. I spent a few days in San Antonio, Texas, enjoying that eighty plus degree heat. And I tell you, coming back to Brooklyn was very depressing. Uh, it is cold and wet around here, but you have to come back home eventually. You have to deal with what you gotta deal with. So, we're here. Uh, oh, wait, are, are we buffering? Let's see. Hopefully, everything is fine. I think there's someone else. What's going on? Well, we can't find, uh, this doesn't work, we'll probably go find other string. Oh, there's, okay, they're back. Okay, cool. Um, let's see if they actually started the meeting.
How do I focus?
It was good. I'll see what's going on. Oh, wait a minute. What's going on? I don't think Tiffy's gonna be on Zoom. Usually it's the lawyer. Well, that's cool. Nick, you look awesome. Yeah, San Antonio was a good time. Real, real cool situation. Uh, hopefully, the connection comes back. It's definitely not my connection. Uh, last time I did a stream and it was, I was, for some reason, connected to wifi and I, and I usually have a, a wire coming in right from my computer to the modem. So, that's, that's up again.
I had to um, I had to switch my uh, um, phone, phone. Do not disturb. But to be fair, they didn't start. My bad.
Alright, they're still, they're still taking it. They're taking their time. We'll, we'll uh, we'll chat as they do their thing. Let me put a little bit of sound so I can hear what they're talking about. But um, yeah, I don't, it doesn't look like Tiffany Hainier is gonna be in this meeting unfortunately. Uh, so it's gonna be productive. It just won't uh, have a lot of the drama and back and forth uh, stuff that, you know, you get, you guys are accustomed to when you are watching these type of meetings, unfortunately, or fortunately. Uh, Barbara, what is this meet, special meeting about? It's actually a bunch of stuff. Um, I should really have that all together before I just come on. It's crazy. Um, but it's, it's, it's basically a lot. Yeah, I think it's a lot of uh, cleanup in terms of some of the stuff and some of the uh, services and stuff they're gonna be doing. So, uh, with no Tiffany Hainier, they're gonna probably actually have a legit meeting. So, uh, they'll probably able to uh, talk about a lot of stuff that they're trying to map out. Cause it looks like Tiffany Hainier, did she give up? Yo, who is this dude with the cool hat? Like the Undertaker? Got nice shoes too, man. Those shoes look pretty, pretty nice. Uh, that's a cool, that's a cool ass dude. But anyway, let's, let's go back, see if they're gonna start soon.
This makes no sense for this segregation. She got the thug with her.
A pimp name slick back. Uh, yeah, I guess they're still taking their time, waiting for the meeting. I guess maybe they're waiting just to um, they're waiting to give her, give uh, Hanyard time to show up. Even though it looks like that's not gonna happen. Uh, Undertaker, Omar from The Wire. Yeah, he looking good. Listen, when you, you gotta, you gotta look good. You gotta make sure you take pride in your appearance. Tiffany Hainier knows that, right? All the money she spent to make herself look uh, look good. Um, oh, Wyatt Earp, huh? That's, that's a throwback. Been pimpin', been pimpin'. Um, yeah, it look, I mean, uh, Vivian said that, I guess he hugged Tiffany Hainier. I mean, Tiffany Hainier hugs everybody. I mean, uh, it's, it's, she's very, very charismatic. It's just her behavior and how she moves. Uh, put, you know, puts herself in so much trouble. Of Keith Price getting fired. You know what? Good, that's a really good question. And I don't live there, but if I was there, I would ask the trustees, why Keith Price still has a position there? What is, is that, that's a bit odd, isn't it? I mean, if you really wanna think about it, that's a bit odd. Now, it's almost over. But the fact that Keith Price still is employed there, I'll find that a little, a little odd. You know, like what, what is really going on? Just saying. Okay, are they starting? Let's see.
Hey, hear me? Hello? Ain't nothing really being said, but can y'all hear? Oh, okay. I just wanna make sure. Thank you. Bingo was canceled. They got it on the, uh, front of the door. So Bingo has been canceled for today. Thank you. I can't wait to be able to use my uh, my Michael, my mic minis, whatever. There we go. Kinda better. Thank you guys for responding. Nah, Tiffany not coming. I think they gonna start in a minute.
Nope, still not happening. Nothing's happening. Um, yeah, so, yeah, the, the Keith Price thing is really, really interesting uh, to me that he still has a position there, even though it is towards the end. Um, I, I, I get it. You don't necessarily, I mean, at this point, it's, it's over. In a few months, everything has changed. But I just, I, I just find it a little interesting co- considering how disruptive Keith Price has been in this situation. There's so much going on. I, I don't know. Do I need popcorn for this meeting? No, cause it doesn't look like uh, Hanyard's gonna show up. So, this is gonna probably be a pretty brief meeting. Usually this, these things probably last maybe an hour. Um, but we, I am interested to see exactly what's being covered, what is being um, taken care of. Cause uh, it looks like Trustee Gray is not there. She is, she's definitely not in the building and Hanyard is not there as well, so. We'll see, we'll see, we'll see. Exactly. Exactly. Something of, something that actually could benefit the people who live there. You know, um, that was probably one of the fastest meetings last month, I think, or last month. Was it last week? When was the meeting? The, the meeting they had where it lasts about, I don't know, maybe five minutes. So, we'll see. Uh, Keith Price is probably a mole for the FBI. It depends on how far deep did he get into a lot of stuff. I mean, I think he was obviously the, you know, one of the soldiers for Tiffany Hainier. But Keith Price may not be as stupid as Keith Freeman and the others that went into true crimes, at least allegedly, right? Or Kamal Woods. Keith Price may have just talked a lot of game, but maybe didn't jump into a lot of stuff. I mean, uh, and also, I think there is that lawsuit that involves Keith Price and um, Jerry Jones' son. But that's township stuff. That's not, that's not federal. That's not FBI investigated, that type of thing. I don't see Keith, uh, according to um, Vivian, none of Hanyard's people are there. So, usually if they're not there, obviously, Hanyard's not gonna show up, but um, but yeah, I don't, I didn't see Keith Price, but Vivian is in the middle, like right in the front. She just put the camera straight there, so we don't know what's going on behind her or on the sides, but she would've mentioned it if it was. That's funny. That was, I like that one. I like that one. He's a big, large influence. Rumored that Tiffany skipped town. Uh, uh, where's she gonna go? You know, where's she gonna go? She always gonna come back. Her houses, her house, her homes, multiple parents. They're like, uh, I, I don't really see her going anywhere. Uh, most likely, she got a working deal. If the feds really come down on her, she's gonna have to work out some kinda deal, take, take the hit, take her time. Whatever her responsibilities or the accountability, she gotta, she gotta ride with it. I mean, according to, and please, anyone that's in the township, let me know. Is the Keith Price still running the food pantry? I believe so. So, I'm assuming it's, as fast as they fired um, William Moore, right, and Kamal Woods, which was, I think, justifiable firings. Um, cause they behaved, both of their behaviors uh, as public servants wasn't acceptable, in my opinion. But you also could say that about Keith Price. He didn't necessarily fight, but he was very nasty to the residents. Um, he's in a lawsuit of a former employee. Why's he still, why's he still working there? Or let me know. If someone, please let me know. If Keith Price is still, i- it's been fired, or it's something new, let me know. Please email me, h@hennebozhungry.com. But I haven't heard anything about that. And I do find that to be odd. Am I wrong? Like, am I being, like, am I being a little bit too, uh, with too much scrutiny on this? Like, I, I just find it a bit odd. Alright, let me put the volume back up, see if anything is happening.
If we have a corner. Oh, I didn't see that. Now, they have to give Tiffany time to not show up. Even though they know she's not coming, they still have to give her a grace period to show up. They can't just start the meeting on time, even though they know she not coming. That's the, the mayor protest clause, I guess. So, same thing adult. So, they can't start the meeting without giving her a grace period to show up.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Uh, six fifteen, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you everybody for coming out. So, we can call this meeting, so.
Okay, under time is six fifteen. Roll call. Trustee Gonzalez.
Present.
Trustee Darlene Gray Everett. Trustee Carlisle, present. Trustee Stephanie Weedman.
Present.
Supervisor Tiffany Hainier.
Alright, if we uh, could rise or pledge allegiance.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Chris for supervisor potential.
I'll second.
Trustee Weedman.
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett. Supervisor Hainier. Motion passed.
Alright, sorry, was I a little uh, ahead of it, going, we started meeting?
Not at all.
Wait, guys, not at, thank you. Um, okay, if we could continue, um, under the next item, we have approval of minutes. Uh, is there a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January fourteenth. Can I do them all together? I can read them together?
Yes, you can. You can do an omnibus motion to approve uh, all three meeting minutes.
Okay. Um, so I would like to approve the meetings from January fourteenth, the special meeting February sixth, and the regular board meeting for February eleventh.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Weedman.
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett. Supervisor Hainier. Motion passed.
Alright, next item is approval of bills. Motion to approve.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the bills excluding item one eighty-six, one eighty-seven through one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, one ninety through one ninety-two, one ninety-four, and one ninety-five through one ninety-seven. I would second that.
Any discussion?
Oh, hold on, Florida, cause I do have a little discussion. For, for two of these, um, the JM sales and the OK trading. I don't, I saw Robert come in here. Can we not put these on anymore? These were for the Christmas gifts, correct?
I can, I think so. I can just double check.
Okay.
When we print the invoices out right now?
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure, cause we've looked at it before, but I mean, this is sixty-six thousand dollars that we keep pulling. And Christmas is well past and I can't anticipate that, you know, these would be necessary right now. So, if we could just remove these from the list moving forward, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I definitely think um, maybe attorney can address how the board can maybe vote to permanently remove these and then just do, I'm not sure. That'd be more of illegal, how to,
Okay.
how to not have these bills appear.
Okay, but nothing has been purchased, correct?
Nothing has been purchased. This is requesting approval.
Okay. Is there a way we could do that, attorney? You couldn't hear him. He says,
I, I, I actually was just uh, gonna say, I, I can't hear anything that uh, Mr. uh, Director Hunt is saying. Um, if, if, when somebody's speaking, if we can have them speaking to the microphone so I could hear it. But what was uh, Director Hunt saying as it related to the Christmas gift stuff?
He just asked if there was a way that we can vote to keep these off the bills list. They, they've been put on since Christmas. We voted no, at least every time I've been here, um, clearly before me too, yet they keep getting added. Nothing has been purchased yet. They're just adding them as a preapproval, I suppose. But is there a way to just remove them so we don't have to keep pulling them out ourselves?
Um, I mean, I would suggest making a motion to have those items permanently removed from the bill listing.
Okay. Would that be separate from what we're doing right now?
Yes, I would do uh, yes, I, I would, I would vote, I would suggest you that vote to approve the bill list as amended. As you just stated, the amendment, then once that vote is done, you have a separate motion to permanently remove those items from the, from the bill listing.
Okay.
Trustee Carlisle.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Weedman.
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett. Supervisor Hainier. Motion passed.
Should I do the motion now or after all the bills are paid?
If it relates to
General funds.
Type of, or this specific fund, I would suggest just doing it now.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to remove JM sales for forty thi- forty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and OKK trading for twenty thousand, five hundred, twenty dollars and ninety cents. Permanently from the bill list.
I second that motion.
Trustee Weedman.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle.
Yes.
Trust, Trustee Gray Everett. Supervisor Hainier. Motion passed.
Is there a motion to approve general assistance fund bills?
Um, I like, I make, to make a motion to approve the general fund bills excluding eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
General assistance. Yeah, general fund.
I'm sorry, general assistance.
Okay.
I'll second.
Trustee Carlisle.
Yes.
Trustee Weedman.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett. Supervisor Hainier. Motion passed.
Alright, item three, is there a motion to approve Road and Bridge Fund?
I'll make a motion to approve Road and Bridge. To approve Road and Bridge.
Second.
Roll call. Trustee Weedman.
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett. Supervisor Hainier. Motion passed.
Alright, next item, under old business, uh, item one, adopt twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget and appropriation ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one for Thornton Township General Assistance Fund. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Can we have a little discussion?
I'm sorry, discussion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanna, just for the, for the public. So, the budget that we're approving, the year is over. It ended at the end of February. Um, the, the numbers that we're approving, Robert, can we post this one we have in here online?
It, it is posted online.
The one with the actuals?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're approving is the actual spent. So, there's, there's no um,
Pre-audited actions.
Pre-audited actuals, but there's, there's no guessing. Um, the, the numbers are, are fairly accurate. So, just, I just wanna make sure that, that the public knows that what we're approving in the previous year is what has been spent. So, nothing more, nothing less.
Any more discussion?
Trustee Weedman.
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett. Supervisor Hainier. Motion passed.
Item two, under old business, adopt twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget and appropriation ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero two for Thornton Township General Fund. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Basically the same.
Same, right, yep.
So, it's the same as we did with the previous.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Weedman.
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle.
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett. Supervisor Hainier. Motion passed.
Right, item three, under old business, approval of supervisors one hundred percent property tax refund for all homeowners of Thornton Township. Is there a motion? Alright, just go forward or do these item dives or?
We go forward.
The item dies or the board, uh, can also make a motion to remove this from the agenda. I would like to make a motion to remove the supervisor's hundred percent property tax refund from the agenda permanently.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Carlisle.
Yes.
Trustee Weedman.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett. Supervisor Hainier. Motion passed.
Alright, item four, under old business, approval of bonuses for all Thornton Township employees.
Do we have to have a motion to discuss? A motion to discuss, right?
We can't hear you. Um, attorney, we can't hear you.
He's calling you, attorney.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, so I was saying that they can do a motion for discussion.
I'll motion for discussion purposes.
I'll second.
So, I just,
Trustee Carlisle.
Oh, we wanted to have discussion.
Okay, okay, go ahead. Um, I just wanna address the employees. Um, I know that this has been an, an ongoing thing and I recognize the hard work that everybody employed here does. And I, I don't want people to think that goes unnoticed. However, the year did end in February. And that being said, um, for the, the previous year, there's really not much that we can do as a board here. So, I know that, that this is tough for the people that have been to work every day and doing their job. Um, and, you know, my hope moving forward is that, you know, things improve. But right now, there's, you know, just not much that, that the board here can do right now. So, although we appreciate you guys and we see the hard work you're doing, um, well, we just, we have to take a vote, right? Yeah.
So, so you at, at this, oh, can you guys hear me through the regular audio now?
No, we hear you. I think we hear you on the phone still.
Um, what I was gonna say is that you guys could do a motion to either table this item or you can do a motion to permanently remove this item from the agenda, or you can do a motion to approve. So, those are the three options that you have.
Um, so tabling it wouldn't be productive, right? Because, I mean, the previous year is over. We, I mean, it would have to be included in the upcoming budget. There's not much we, right? So,
Yes.
I mean, tabling it at this point wouldn't, if, if, there's nothing we could do the next meeting either, right?
Correct.
Right.
Correct. So, I, I think probably based upon the discussion that was had, I think probably the best motion is to uh, do a motion to permanently remove the item from the agenda.
At a later time, if there's something along the same lines that needs to be just uh, voted on, we could bring that up in a different motion. Line item motion.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, just to be clear, this is as it relates to the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so we had a motion and a second, correct? But now we're going to,
For discussion, right?
For discussion.
For discussion, so you'll need a new motion.
Okay, correct, okay.
I'll make a motion to permanently, permanently remove the bonuses for all Thornton Township employees. I'll make a motion to permanently, permanently remove the bonuses for all Thornton Township employees.
I'll specify in that motion, uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
You want to say the whole thing over or just the twenty-four, twenty-five year is fine?
I, uh, clerk, what would you prefer?
To say it all. Okay. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to permanently remove all bonuses for the Thornton Township employees for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Is that sufficient? Okay.
I'll second.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
All right, uh, next item is resolution proclamation ordinances. Um, item one, approve resolution twenty-five dash R dash zero zero one authorizing Thornton Township participation in the twenty twenty-five program year Cook County Community Development Ra, Black Grant Program.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, so just for the public, these grants are specifically for road and bridge. So I think we have people that can speak on this more, but I believe the, um, the block grant is for the roads. There are still some roads that need repairing, so I believe that's what that one will be for. Is that the one we're, yeah, that's the one we're on. Um, so I just wanted to be clear that this isn't anything that's gonna go towards general fund, um, nothing that would be, you know, any new buildings here, but this is specifically for road and bridge. Is now the time?
We have someone here that can speak on the grant, um, should we wait until we talk about the second grant? Or should he come and speak about this particular one now?
I would suggest, uh, that he can come speak on it now because it, he can speak on this item first and then he should speak on the second item, uh, the invested Cook item or that item. So we're now, you guys have, I believe there was a motion and a second on this, so that's up for discussion. So you could have, um, whatever individual is there that have potential to make it along and have to speak at it.
So I'd be quick, good evening, my name is Aldo Fazal Kendall, uh, Department of Transportation, Special Assistant with County Board President Tony Preckwinkle. The CBG grant is principally, is a federal grant that flows through the county of which the, um, Thornton Township applies to use the funds. And we will consider it to be low to moderate income areas where you have, um, improvements that need to be done on the roads and or sidewalks or related kind of, um, services. And it's something that we are glad to do in partnership with the, uh, township and for the residents. And I'll talk about the other grant later.
All right, thank you. There's a motion and second, call the rule, please.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
Item two, approve resolution twenty-five dash R dash zero zero two authorizing Thornton Township participation in the twenty twenty-five program year Invest in Cook.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't have any discussion.
Okay.
You wanna speak on it?
Invest in Cook grant is something that we've done over the number of years as part of the program that President Preckwinkle, um, expanded in order to be able to invest in our local, um, bridges and roads and to improve the, uh, driving conditions within Cook County. As many people might not be aware of, in Cook County, south suburbs have the longest transportation route for those going to and from work. And so Invest in Cook allows us to begin to, uh, try and focus our dollars in improving, well, we put together a plan, the first hundred year plan. And in that plan, Invest in Cook allows us to give dollars to communities, municipalities, to help them to be that bridge, to help them to improve their bridge, their bridges, their roads and local municipal, uh, parts within their government in terms of roads and bridges to, uh, improve the life and the driving conditions and the commute of our residents. And Thornton Township is applying for some of those dollars and so consequently, we came to life. Tomorrow is the deadline and I want to thank you for having this special meeting so that it was able to get in. There are two other grants, man, I think I should talk about those in the other part.
All right. All right, thank you.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
All right, next item, three, approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero three, related to establishing a whistleblower protection policy for Thornton Township.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
He gave Tiffany Huggs the last meeting.
The board has requested this.
Fancy hat.
Uh, and the, the reason for this ordinance is to essentially notify the employees of what their protections are and to just basically put all of the state laws sort of into one ordinance so that it's an easy reference.
Don't worry about it.
So the employees know that they are protected if they wanna be a whistleblower, if there's something that they have to report.
And I would like to encourage the employees to please read it.
And I guess I'll, on this, just, we, uh, wanted to put this on here a while back, if you see something, say something. If you're asked to do something that you know is wrong, illegal, unethical, there are protections in place, you can't say no.
Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
Item four, approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero four, adopting an ethics, ethics ordinance and policy for Thornton Township.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, the board would like to just make a quick, a quick statement about, uh, this ordinance as well. And essentially, this ordinance came about, uh, because there was an inquiry as to whether the township had an ethics ordinance. I do believe that the township probably passed one back in the early two thousands when this was originally required. Uh, but it wasn't able to be found for whatever reason. So just to make sure that everybody knows what the ethics policies are as required by state law. Uh, and to update the ethics ordinance, it's, you know, we thought it would be a good idea to give you guys a brand new ordinance to approve to make it clear that the township does have an ethics policy and what those policies are. And it does relate to, you know, certain prohibited political activities and reporting of things that, um, that somebody finds to be a potential violation of the ethics ordinance and an establishment of an ethics commission and other items in there.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
All right, item five, approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero five, amending Thornton Township's paid leave policy for part-time and seasonal employees of Thornton Township.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna, just a, a little comment, this is based around, um, the new law that, that requires us to, you know, give sick time and pay leave to all employees. So all this ordinance is doing is putting us in line with the state law that's been put forth.
Yes, and then the state law as well as the county ordinance.
All right. Red, any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Imagine.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
All right, next, under new business, uh, item one, emergency approval of disagreement with cons...
Constancy.
Constancy, yeah, Constancy Brooksmith and Prophet LLC.
Motion. Second.
All right, call the rule, please.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
All right, item two, emergency approval of disagreement with Hurry Advisors LLC.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
All right, item three, approval of upcoming events.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to permanently remove these from the agenda.
Yes.
Second.
Amen.
Any discussion?
Amen.
I'll call the role, please.
Good job.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
Item four, uh, Senior Law Care Bid Packet twenty twenty-five, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, so this, go ahead.
Just to be clear, is that a motion to approve? For...
No, for them to go out to bid, this is for the departments to send the bid out.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
So, yes, this is a motion, yeah, to, to approve, to, well, a motion for the, right. So I just wanna, as part of discussion, so the packet that we're approving is what they'll use to go out to bid. No, the bidding process hasn't been done yet, that'll start after this meeting. Once the bid goes out, um, you know, we'll get them back in, the board will then make a decision. These companies, as, as, as far as it sits right now, now I can't say what happens, you know, after the election. However, as it sits right now, this, this will only cover, um, a, a contractor cutting for, maybe say, um, May, September, and October. The summer, when the kids are out of school, the kids, you know, as it sits now, will be cutting. But what we're approving is the bid process for the companies to come in and start and end when the kids can't cut.
You have an only for the bid process?
Correct.
All right, is it? Any other discussion? Any further? Okay.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
All right, item five, motion to approve April eighth, twenty twenty-five annual town hall meeting agenda to be held at Thornton Township Building, three three three, East one hundred and sixty-second Street, South Highland, Illinois. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
All right, any discussion? All right, call the role, please.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
Item six, discussion and possible action to move public comments to the beginning of the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, Henry, motion pass.
All right, item seven, motion to approve Township Lobby Day twenty twenty-five in Springfield, Illinois for attendance and expenses for attendees. Uh, supervisor, trustees, assessor, deputy assessor, general assistants, one, special projects, one. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, I just wanna, just a, a question, this is one, a one-day event, right? So the township would cover the expense for registration and one night hotel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass.
Item eight, motion to direct the HR director and accountant to audit the township's comp time liabilities. Is there a motion?
I'll motion, second.
All right, any discussion? Call the role, please.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, Henry, motion pass.
Item nine, approval of contract with Civic System Cassell. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
So as, as to this one, if I may, um, there were basically three different pricing options, uh, presented to the board. And I have had an opportunity to individually discuss, uh, the pricing options with the board members that are present here today. And the board members have indicated that they would go with option one, which is the three-year upfront cost, uh, with a monthly cost of four hundred dollars for a term of thirty-six months, and over the three years, it'd be fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Um, so my suggestion would be to make a motion or to do an amended motion to approve the agreement with option one.
I would like to make an amended motion to approve the agreement with option one.
Second.
Any discussion further? Call the role, please.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, Henry, motion pass.
All right, next item, item on the agenda is closed session.
I would like to make a motion.
Second.
And, and just for the record, it's to go into closed sessions for the items stated and on the agenda, which include litigation, employee, uh, employment matters and the other matters that stated on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Whedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry, motion pass to go in the closed session, six forty-seven.
Six forty-seven? I thought it was super later. So we in closed session, y'all.
All right, we in closed session, y'all, uh, just following him. I say, I love everybody, it's crazy, I just, I, I've been following this for so long that I'd never physically, obviously, been in this area and I recognize almost everyone there, kinda crazy. So what you guys think about what's going on? This, to me, it seems like it's a lot of cleanup, they're, they're just trying to make things as, um, they're trying to clean up a lot of the mess that's been going on for the last couple of years. So I don't know how long, um, the closed session will be. The closed session is going to discuss, I just find, thank you, uh, expiration date for the, um, this reminded me that the Lansing Journal, if you guys wanna see the, if you guys wanna see the, the agenda for tonight, it's at the Lansing Journal. So the closed session is going to discuss hiring, discipline, performance, and compensation, and the dismissal of several personnel, legal counsel, and acquisition of real property matters pending probable or immediate litigation pursuant to the section two C one of the Opens Meetings Acts, Open Meetings Acts related to the employment or discipline of, uh, certain employees. Uh, discussion, and I guess after, cause we all, we all sitting here chilling out. After the closed session, there'll be discussion and possible actions related to determination of employment, or, sorry, employee A. Possible, uh, action related to supervisor's vehicle stipend, which the supervisor has received for the duration of her term. Riding around those town halls from LA to Chicago or from whatever their lyrics was, so that's what will be discussed in closed session show, we'll just chill out for a minute, wait for the, uh, for it to finish and then we'll kinda recap exactly what, uh, what was discussed in the entire meeting. Very easy meeting, looks, you know, no, no fighting, I know some people were a little disappointed. Where's the fights? Uh, with no hanging there, the fights are not, just, it's not, it's not gonna be much of a fight. Um, people, most, most of the meetings that I realized in, um, a lot of these town halls are very, very boring cause they're supposed to be boring, they're not supposed to be full of emotion and anger and people ready to, uh, take themselves out. take themselves out. Um, oh, just typing out something, okay, cool. Um, other than that, I thought, um, yeah, I think it's a pretty good way of saying it, it's, it's about taking back control. It's about doing things that makes a lot of sense, okay, giving employees bonuses. After this contentious, chaotic administration, at least for the last year, does not make sense. The employees will be upset. If I was working there, I'd be upset. I think you would, you expect some money, right? Of course, everyone wants money. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Um, the events, let's stop discussing all these events that they're spending, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, like, let's try to, um, seve, you know, trying to really take care of people who are looking to say, you know what, I'm being, uh, taken advantage of, or they're making me do something illegal. Awesome, then you could sit back and, and not worry about, you know, losing your job or something happening, because it, it's been happening. This type of things where people are doing, or being forced to do illegal acts. And there should be protections with that, so, um, yeah, or, actually, I think that's extremely, uh, great comment, it's, it's, it's not boring, it's necessary. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be about the work. And not about someone trying to win points, and try to look like they're, um, like they're trying to get some kind of clout for, for their profile, and you know, I guess the theatrics need to be, uh, toned down just a bit, so uh, you know, uh, uh, especially after that, that crazy situation that happened before. I'm cool with, with no fighting, and, and fighting helps. Fighting benefits, I guess, you could say benefits, um, actually, what I'm doing here. Benefits content creators for, obviously, because that type of thing does, you do, you do pretty well when it comes to going back and forth and talking about that type of thing, but it's just not, it's not, you get tired of it. We just get tired of it. Um, the word you're looking for is uneventful, yeah. Yeah, I definitely agree with that one. Wow, that's, well, the, the egg thing is, is, is ridiculous, like, how dare they? They better fix, they better figure that out. I don't know what we're gonna do. Considering that, I think eggs is one of the few things, who doesn't like eggs? Is anyone here who don't like eggs? Eggs are, like, who doesn't like eggs? This, this is impossible, right? Like, eggs are amazing, anyway. Um, as we wait for the as we wait for, actually, what am I doing here? Let me click, let me click that off, too. Okay. So, as they go to closed session, let's talk about the meeting a little bit. So far, the MVP is that baby, I mean, you know, as much as people find it a little annoying, it's interesting to hear, the only disruptive thing that's happened in this meeting so far is a baby that probably is bored to tears. I'll take it. I'll take it, it doesn't matter to me, so, um, so, a lot of it was obviously approving of bills, general fund, the general assistance fund, road and bridge fund, the, um, going to the old business, again, talking about general assistance, general fund, that type of thing. Um, I think the, the idea is that they started to take control on what is going on here. And not allowing, um, the nonsense to go, cause, you know, at this point, Hanyan is probably out, yeah, she's still, she's still able to be elected by a write-in, but that is extremely, extremely unlikely. Um, I, I do like the fact that the bonuses for the one township employees was permanently removed. I think that was a good idea. If I was a resident, I realize that all the problems and all of the issues and the misappropriation of money, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to give out bonuses. That's just unfortunate if you work there, but I think that's probably a, a good idea. Um, the removal of the supervisor's one hundred percent property tax refund from the agenda has been removed. Good idea, I think it was, it was something that, it looks like it was manipulated by, by Hanyan to try to make something she was doing. Um, the people are solid when the amount of money that each person's gonna receive was just a very small amount of money, it didn't make a whole lot of sense. Um, what else? I thought so, the, the remove of some vendors from the bill due to re-incurring charges and outdated Christmas expenditures, that type of thing. So, just, it, a lot of it seemed to me was a lot of cleanup, cleaning up all of the nonsense, because remember, the last meeting was about five seconds. It wa, it wasn't a whole lot going on. Um, let me see if it was anything else that I could think of. And also, the, the adoption of the whistleblower protection policy. And the, and then the ethics ordinance to ensure accountability and transparency. That is awesome. That, that's what people want, right? If there's, if an employee sees something illegal, or they're being asked to do something illegal, that employee should be able to notify the proper authorities and not worry about losing their job, or getting locked out, or all the stuff that, that was happening allegedly under Tiffany Hanyan's, um, rule as supervisor, where if you didn't play ball with her, she would fire you. So, so really, this is probably one of more, uh, positive meetings and impactful meetings. By just putting in just, just the basics of removing some of the nonsense and figuring out, okay, how can we prevent this from ever happening again, at least at the, to this point? It's kinda moved past the nonsense, so it, it was, it was primary focus on financial housekeeping, uh, obviously, community improvements, and ensuring transparency through the ordinances and policies. So, I think, in my opinion, the board made, uh, significant decisions on these matters. And we're gonna see what's gonna happen after the what you call it? The, the, I guess, the prior executive session, the prior session, to see exactly what employee uh, was removed, I know someone mentioned it earlier, that it's, it's possible that it, the employee is one of Tiffany Hanyan's relatives. So, we'll see how long it takes for them to finish, cause I think they're all just hanging out, but I thought this is probably one of the more positive meetings I've seen. Of getting to the heart of the matter of exactly what they need to fix the issues and to improve that this doesn't happen um, in the future, at least reducing that, that issue. And you know, I, I don't know what, I don't know anything about the Invest in Cook grant to fund local infrastructure, transportation parks, that's, that's above me, I don't live there. Um, I'm sure that the YouTubers who are in don't can explain that, see if it's good or bad, I, I all I know is the guy looked pretty cool. He had a cool outfit. But don't just go by, um, appearances, obviously. No, I don't care how cool his hat is, or he could be the Quaker Old Sky, or he's the Undertaker, or he may be a gunslinger in the O'Keefe Corral, all those things are very funny. But they don't necessarily mean, uh, there's anything interesting, uh, in terms of, this is actually going to help the people, so um, oh, he's right, he's still there, he's all the way in the back there, I just see him, look. You know? And then also you see, I think that's Nate Fields, and he's still running as independent for, um, township. And I didn't see Keith Price, but I wasn't, oh, this is yapping, but I don't, I don't see him. Yeah, I, I don't see him. Not, no idea. But, uh, what, what is your opinion, what you guys thought about the meeting? I know no fights, I know that's the thing that you guys really, not, you know, guys wanna see the fights, but I thought they really, uh, housekeeping, I think that, if that was one word, housekeeping. Um, you know? Uh, ile, I said illegal? Illegal? All right, but the more, the more I say it, I'm gonna say it wrong, cause I, I'm overdoing it. Um, not legal. I'll, I'll just say that to keep it, uh, so I can actually s, speak properly, cause I, I mean, at this point, you're doing YouTube videos. You're speaking as, as a profession, I should be able to pronounce at least ninety percent of the words that I, that come out my mouth hole. Um, is it anything else I could think of? I don't know. Um, Javon with a ten dollar donation, appreciate you, thank you very much. Now that just dawned on me, did anyone tell, told Nate Fields he looked like Soulja Boy with them glasses? Does he know who Soulja Boy is? How old is he? He's, he's probably in his thirties, right? He probably should know who Soulja Boy is. Soulja Boy, tell. Uh, Bob. Yeah, I agree, a very productive, very productive meeting, um. Let me make this smaller so you guys, yeah. Yeah, I think it was very, very productive, I think that's the kind of meeting that is necessary to start. Um, making significant, um, progress. Uh, you know, if, the fact that Tiffany Hain, if it's true that she left yesterday or day before, that shows me that, that she doesn't care. And she's, she's on her way out, I think she's looking to find her way to maybe other things. Um, obviously, it looks like there's some entertainment that she thinks that she's gonna be able to get herself into. So, she's, I think she realized, you know what, there's, there's highly unlikely that I'm going to win by write-in vote, it's, it's extremely difficult. Uh, IMO, uh, is quickly facing any charges for the role of fight. I don't know. I have no idea how any of this works, I you guys tell me, especially you, you guys then in Illinois. There was a full-blown fight that was viral. News media picked it up. No one would, has been arrested. You tell me how that makes sense. I, I don't know how that makes sense, I don't know how no one's been charged. There's videos all over the place, you kind of see who did what uh, most of the time, you, you, you get, we all saw ten thousand different camera angles. We saw people getting assaulted. And no one has been arrested. I don't know, I, I, you tell me why, I have no idea. I, I don't, is, is, is it, is mutual combat something that's, that's going on in, in Illinois, or you could just fight and nothing happens, I I don't know, dude, I have no idea how no one has been arrested for that. No clue. Um, but yeah, we still, we still, yeah? Yeah? Oh, yeah, ch, the chief came, apparently, the chief roughed him up, so there's, uh, there's charges being filed, there's lawsuits being filed. So, I got that video, um, I just finished working on that video, that'll probably be released tomorrow. Um, I, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of things about, um, Village, Salk Village, that's near Dalton as well, so I'm, I'm in the mix. I've, I was gone for a few days, but, uh, there's still a lot to talk about, and I didn't realize that, shout, um, shout out to Messy Mashawn, that I didn't know, a couple of days ago, this story that, that's from New York City. Uh, there was a, a chief that was providing female employees with ridiculous amounts of overtime, and, and many of these female cops were making over a hundred thousand dollars a year, making crazy amount of money. And it started to look, it started to, the allegation started, um, that there was some sex for OT. And one of the officers actually in, was interviewed, her name is Quantisha Epps. That happened eight days ago, totally missed it, so I got, talk about that as well, so there's a lot to dive into, um, as we are getting towards the end of this, I know early voting has started in the town, uh, in, in village, I guess, in, in the township as well. So, we will see probably a new mayor and probably a new supervisor. And I hope that everyone is everyone is gonna still pay attention, especially if you live there, you should just pay attention. Uh, because it affects you the most. Succeding too says, did you talk about the science? No, I did not, I did see, uh, Martin G. Johnson, I think he had a, a livestream about that. Didn't know that, but Riverdale, I mean, we've, um, the video that, uh, obviously, he was a part of, and, um, Ryan Gay, Chicago, about the chief over there being extremely unprofessional. Just not professional, the what, what he was doing, the way he was approaching um, that situation where the man was trying to provide food. Whether you like the person or not, I think it's, it was very, very, um, unprofessional, it could've went in different ways. And not a good way, the way the chief was speaking and while he was handling, he was, he was dis, he was, he was basically escalating matters, he was not de-escalating it. And the guy was serving food, the man lost the election, he, he ran for mayor, didn't get it. Um, and just some, even if it's just a paperwork issue, most, I think most situations, the police would've figured it out without much back and forth and, and, and anger and threats and all that type of thing, so let's see. Yeah, I hope they, I hope, I hope they do. I hope they do discuss it, um. You know, if Tiffany Hain was there, she would've just mentioned it. Then she would've just said what they were talking about, so hopefully, they, they will discuss who, um, is the employee, cause I'm very interested, cause it doesn't look like it doesn't look like it's gonna be Keith Price, right? I'm just guessing, I, I don't think so. Um, we had, we had, we had, I forgot, someone came in the chat and mentioned a name. But Keith Price may not be the name, so let's get back into it, let me see, let me see if, uh, let's see what Vivian talking about real quick.
I don't know, I think Cassie will win, though. Tiffany is fast, but I, I think Cassandra can get her. Well, thank you, I appreciate that, because, uh, yeah, shots fired, I'm, I'm on Cassie's ad on this one, and I told you, I saw Cassie Monday when she went, uh, when, when I went to vote, I'm talking about when she went. Um, and, uh, she was, the, Brittany said that she was being nice to them the whole day, so I was like, oh, okay, let me go speak to her. Right, I wanted to just say hi to Cassie, and, you know, to give a, you know, congratulations, good, good luck on, yo, whatever you're trying to do, even though you're not gonna win. And you know, she had the nerve to show me, like, girl, whatever. Did that, I was like, oh, okay, that's why you don't lose.
All right, well, it's just Cassandra, yeah, I, I, I didn't make, I don't think I've made any videos primarily focusing her, cause I thought one, for one thing, you guys, and maybe I'm, maybe, I think you guys get it, the ones who watch this channel. I'm not a politics channel. Like, that's not my, my, I'm not, I, obviously, I talk about political figures, but I'm not, I'm not breaking down a ton of stuff about who you, you vote for this person, or don't vote for this, vote for this person, like, my videos are mainly about corruption. It's about you know, people with a pattern of bad behavior. So, I, and I, and I saw uh, a few videos with, with, uh, Cassandra and how she was speaking, um, to the residents, um, how she was on live streams, um, the way she was speaking. I didn't think she had a chance to win at all. So, it was interesting that I, I saw so much videos going, uh, going in as if she was gonna be a threat. And I thought, I'm looking at, I'm like, she's not gonna win. Like, there's, there's, you know, politicians are supposed to be liked. At one point, Tiffany Hain was actually liked. I mean, she won, and she was able to get to where she, you know, then crashed, but as a trustee, she was liked. Even with the crazy stuff about being a slumlord, she was a liked person. Cassie, Cassandra came in not liked. So, I was like, how, you know, I don't see how that's, she's gonna win at all. Um, and so when people said she's Tiffany two point O, I'm like, well, the problem is, when I, when I hear two point O, I thought, I think of improvement, I think better, stronger, faster. Right, from Terminator one to Terminator two with the liquid, liquid, uh, metal and, and going through the bars and slicing people up. Like, so when someone, when I saw anyone saying that Cassandra is, is Tiffany Hain point, two point O, I'm like, I don't see it. Tiffany Hain was well-connected. She was liked. She, Cassandra has no connections, no money. Other than just, you know, being really rude to people. I, I don't see it. Um, it's gonna probably be similar to what Hanyan, it could be even worse in terms of, um, the amount that probably House is going to win. I, I, I just, I don't see it, it's just the way she approached people. Politics is about be, you have to be liked. And I know the first thing people will say, well, it should be about policy, it isn't. It's about liking the person, you have to like the person. They gotta, they gotta at least pretend to like me. Right, they gotta, they gotta pretend to be, to care about people. And Cassandra didn't start that well at all. It was all just contentious, And Cassandra didn't start that well at all. It was all just contentious, angry, worrying about what people are saying on Facebook. Not looking at the fact that who know who cares what people on Facebook are saying. Most people on that Facebook group is they're probably not even in the township. Or not in Dalton, because she's running for uh mayor of Dalton. Why do you care? You should be focusing on the people in the village. And instead of doing that, she was just condescending. Um and not professional. Looks like there was no like. Um someone running her campaign to tell her it is these your talking points. This is how you talk to people. It's how you focus. Show that you care about them. She didn't do any of that. So. I guess I didn't really. I didn't think about making much of a video. And also, uh there's not much of a pattern of her. That's her being uh corrupt because she never ran for anything. Um so I didn't notice. I I was like, eh. She I don't think she's gonna win. I don't think it should be much of a factor. So that's why I guess that's I'm just letting you guys know my mindset about the situation. And also, I think a lot of people already know who they're gonna vote for. And, you know. I mean, I think it would be just a nice video to to talk about how not to run an election like that. How not to get voted? Is like she's probably a great example of don't do anything that Cassandra hops. If you want to run for something, don't do what she did. You may think you have the information. You may think you may on a good side, but if people don't like you, it it won't work. Regardless if you think you have all the facts, all the information, you have to show that you care about the people that you're going to be um representing. Good point. So it's it. So like what you're saying is connections, right? Um you gotta be. You have to be connected with people that. Other people like. So, you know, Cassandra like what's her connections? How many powerful people that will vouch for her? How many people who run businesses? Like who is going? Who's who's backing? That's what we say about politics. It's being run by corporations now, not necessarily by the people, because the corporations have the money. They have the power. They have the connections. And that's why I thought, you know, Cassandra doesn't have any of that. So I just didn't really believe that she was going to have a chance of winning. But. The trustees must have liked her to 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 divide with it and run with it too, right? I mean, or there's more to it. I don't know. I'm just saying. Everyone, I guess which what you have to. Work with is i- if if I'm going to run. Am I going to able to provide value to the people who are helping me run? And I'm and am I look able to have enough value for the residents I'm going to be representing? It has to be. I mean, I still would like to know. And I I would love to know. Why did Chris Gonzalez nominate Tiffany Hager? And I've heard a little bit what he says, and it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Like, I'll be honest. Because. It just doesn't make sense. What happened? Was there more to it? Was there an arrangement? To say, well, I just thought she was gonna do really great? N- no, no. I mean, I I don't see that. I it just, like I said, it's all it po- politics. At the end, at the end, it's all about politics. Who you know? And what you could do for the people that, you know, supposed to jump in and jump in and and take care of yourself. Uh did Dots win his? No, no, he he crashed and burned. I think he Michael Smith. Michael Smith needs to stop running for things. He really needs to stop running for things. And from what I've uh heard and seen from Michael Smith that. He's definitely someone that needs to be away from children. But also, he he looks like he also goes out. Goes out and he's crash out issues because that's just who he is. He certainly has a problem with authority. And he's. He can be used to be manipulated because he may not be. And I'm being, this is just what I heard. He's not the sharpest tool in the box. And he could be used to to kind of run um a lot of the nonsense, the yelling, the screaming. You you get him worked up. Um and you can get him to crash out. But he will never ever really be successful in politics because of his past. And the fact he's been he's been. He has a long rap sheet. He has. He said that he can't control himself. And we don't want him around children. So he needs to find a job. Just go work at a warehouse somewhere. You know, politics is not for everybody. And it's definitely not for people who have a lot of issues. So Dots didn't win. And he'll probably never win. Right? So. Well, Dots just need to take care of Dots and just, or at least, you know what? Just again, avoid children. We don't need you around children. Not cool. Uh what what he's been accused, alleged, been kicked out, fired for doing. Just out. Seems very in impressionable to me as long as he a trustee doesn't like. He knows what's going on. Interesting, interesting. Well, you know, I think most, I mean, I I I'm looking. I looked at who's gonna um running for township. It looks like he may probably gonna win again. So. We'll see. We'll see. Yes, I've I've I made a video about that a couple of weeks ago. I made a video about that a couple of weeks ago. She quit and then decided to come back. Uh, yeah, it does another crash out. Definitely another crash out moment. We'll we 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 will be continue to follow that situation. Um Dot's whole life was mainly in politics. It'll be hard for him. Yeah, but. He's not. He's not gonna win. And I don't know if he understands the the amount of damage he has done. First of all, he has when the moment that he decided. To um get into the amount of criminal activity. That's it. You should just not not bother. And then we did while he was working at that school, trying to take advantage of of people that I think that school was was basically our turn of school. So kids that are struggling academically, physically, and he was trying to take advantage of those people. He should just, again, try to find another job. Tiffany for former publicist told us Chris did not know Tiffany well. He asked. She asked him to do work at the village. She thinks Tiff was allegedly working Joyce Washington over the trustee who passed. Uh Chi Town Gonzalez was a contract scam. That's that's why he. I remember you hear all these things. And, you know, politics, right? It's politics. It's, you know, what can I do for you and what can you do for me? And not in in any of those uh allegations that I just put up there. Had anything to do with their people, the residents, had nothing to do with that. It's about what you could do for me, what I could do for you. But people like Gonzalez now. So I I don't know, man. Like, you you guys tell me. I don't know. I don't live there. Well, Dots, I think Dots, he was. He was once a trustee. So he got over once, but that's about it. Um I don't think, I think after that, I don't think he's he's gonna get back into it. But he, I think at one point he was. Um it's been a minute since I actually took the train because I'm very bougie. But um I guess now it's just. Just, well, you Apple Pay now. You just swipe it with your card now. So. So what happens with un- monthlies and weekly month cards? I have no idea. I didn't. I didn't look that up. Let me see what else is happening at this thing here.
It don't matter. I I remember what it is. Tiffany should be sitting somewhere repenting right now, making up a speech for the residents on how she failed us. And what she planned to do to give us some of our tax money back. That's what she should do. But she not gonna do that. Why she not gonna do that? Cause honesty ain't in her. So I thought your bag is my bag. I'm sitting here about to put my keys in your bag. I'm sorry, y'all.
Well, the problem is it doesn't seem like it's going to be him. From what I heard, it 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 doesn't seem like it's going to be Keith Price. So. We will see if it's being discussed. Um they've been in there for what twenty minutes at least? So we'll we'll hang out and see. What's the big, the big reveal? She's sitting there somewhere with a cocktail. Yeah, who knows? Who knows where Tiffany Hager is? Um as a it's still as a as a mayor and a supervisor, she should announce where she is. That would make sense to me, but I I don't know. Uh Twistin' Side said maybe as a dog catcher, code enforcer lady. Um is that Dalton though? I don't. I don't know. Uh will Tiff go back on Roland Martin when she loses? Probably not. I think Roland Martin probably wouldn't even want her on there. Uh you know, he's trying to find the next. You know, big story. Um but I am. I am interested to see where Tiffany here goes at this. I think she will probably go on a bunch of podcasts and. She will tell her story and try to gain sympathy or try to gain some kind of nori- nori. You guys know what I'm talking about. Um clout, because I can't say that word for some reason. Try to get some kind of clout for um, you know, being so infamous. So. Let's see. Yeah, she's that. Yeah, prob- at least someone, someone's around uh letting her know what's going on. Maybe she got some like a private streamer, you know, someone in there just, you know, filming it just for her. Um actually, isn't the isn't the township guy? Isn't he um the employer? I forgot his name. Emmanuel or something like that. He uh films all of the the meetings. And then they never posted it online. I guess it's just for what their consumption. I have no idea. Um Illinois not an at-will state? I have no idea. Is it? Let's let's use technology. Is Illinois? Is a at-will state? Let's see. Um yes. Illinois is an at-will employee state. That means employers can uh fire employees at any time and for any reason. Or no reason at all, as long as it not is not um like discrimination or retaliation or anything like that. So that's why there's so. That's why there's so many lawsuits against um the township for many of the employees or past employees of the township. Because they believe that they were fired for retaliation. Um she allegedly bought Kim Austin when they let. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So basically, if that's one, that's definitely a ghost shop. Cause I'd never I'd never seen it in any of the meetings um in the township. But do I? Do I need to go through these hoops to term? I mean, I think at this point, they they would want to be very transparent on who they let go and who they don't. Cause I don't think when they were firing, when Tiffany Hager was firing people left and right, she probably even mentioning any of this in these meetings. I think um from the story of Sandra Tracy, um that worked at HR for township. Um. The son of trustees Jerry Jones, when uh he was working at the food pantry. Um allegedly being um basically bullied and harassed by Keith Price. Like, these people are just they either. I think, actually, no, I take that back. I think Jerry Jones' son quit. He wasn't fired. I'll take that back. He 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 didn't. I think he just left. He realized it was just. Is I guess he said it was not a safe situation. But there were he had. They have a few lawsuits based on employees saying that you didn't. Yeah, you fired me, but. Um you know, employees cannot be fired for reporting illegal activities or having a difference of opinions and stuff like that. Like, so. Or or part or in participating in some kind of investigation. So it's a lot of stuff going on. Hey, Chills, what's going on? Appreciate you coming by to the channel as we wait for the ending of the closed ma- meeting. And for those who just came in, what's going on? What's going on in this closed session? Uh so this the closed session is to discuss hiring, discipline, performance, compensation, and the dismissal of certain personnel. Legal counsel and accusation of real property matters pending probable or imminent litigation. Pursuant to the section two C one of the Open Meetings Act related to employment. Employment or discipline of certain employees. Um and then just actions following the closed session discussion. And possible action related to the termination of employee A. So we're all trying to figure out who employee A is. And uh and also this it also says right here, possible action related to supervisors' vehicle stipend. Which the supervisor has uh received for the duration of her term. So. That's what we're here for. You can't fire for sex, age, religion, and I think one other thing. What what's other thing? Gender? No, you're right. So sex, age, religion. Uh. Yeah, yeah. But tho- those are the good ones. Those are the those are the big ones. Let's see. Let's see. Let's see what uh Vivian is saying.
That's the Democratic Party ticket. The thing about um.
No, you missing one person.
I thought I got four.
Oh, what you? You missing somebody. Forgot his name. Yeah.
All the um the 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 highway commissioner um is. No, I said Cassandra. Yeah, for the um assessor.
What's the commissioner's name?
Yeah, I said her name. Casey.
In highway.
Oh, Antoine Russell. Russell?
For highway.
I'm sorry. Antoine Russell. Yeah, I'll see it.
Um all over the place. Race, race. How embarrassing that I didn't know about race. Race, you dummy Hannibal. Like, really? Sex. Ah feel like a feel a little bit like a boob right now. I think I think I'm not sure, but it looks like that's something I should know about. Like, I should. The first one should have been race to me, right? I'm like sex, age, and what's the other? What's the other really big major one? But yeah, I think for most of the issues that uh Hager has been firing people from, it's mostly if you don't agree with me. She's been firing black people, women. It doesn't matter. She she's upset that if you don't, if you're not extremely loyal to her, her nonsense. That's what she finds a way to let you go. Yes, definitely a big one as well. I think we had that. I think actually, it's a bunch of examples. I guess it's not the big four. It's more than what more than that. All right. But I appreciate you guys for hanging out. Please hit the subscribe if you haven't. Haven't uh subscribed to the channel. We talk about this and other. Matters of uh corruption, predatory behavior. Um just with people who have significant. Resources and power and how they abuse it. If if it's happening, we will definitely talk about it on this channel. So we talk about all types of different mayors from across the country. We talk about mayors from Florida, uh Georgia, Texas. I'm in New York City, talking about. Uh Mayor Eric Adams and what he's doing. We talked about. The mayor in LA, Karen Bass. So we are all over the country talking about um all types of, and not just mayors. Um anyone that has significant power and they're abusing it. We tried to to discuss it. Um whether it's political, you know, political positions or not, business owners, we we kind of cover a little bit everything. To do um with that. And, you know, usually the live streams, we are we're kind of checking out, covering. Um. To council hall meetings. But, you know, once this is kind of. Move past the Tiffany Hager saga, it me it to me, it probably becomes more of a local story. We'll I'll definitely try to continue the live streams maybe at least once a week or definitely once a month. But at least once a week, covering different types of stories. That um, you know, obviously some there affect us more than others. But I appreciate you guys for hanging out. Uh on this. What today is? Yeah, Thursday, this Thursday evening. Um. So we will see. Um wow. WN uh BMW kicks says, I expect Hager to be indicted by April sixteenth. Is that the tax? Is that the date, the the deadline for the taxes? I should know that because I have not done my taxes. Um. Yeah, I need to get that done. I did pay the estimated though, but. Yeah, I gotta get that done. Yeah. Oh, let's see what what's else going on.
I, my life is changing. So I wanna see like different restaurants and just how accessible are they to the disabled community? So it's like one of the things I plan on doing further down the line. But I like to still provide content to go out. And just to, you know, review and rate restaurants on their actual accessibility. I think it's important. Tiffany should um not even own that song. That song should never be copyrighted because everything that she used to make that song from was. The residence equipment. She made that song in the township using our township equipment, using our township um employee. Using everything that we offer here at the township. So.
All right. Uh see a good question here. Um do you think? There should be more stringent policies in place for some of these kind of content creators like Jonathan Molly, Jack Doherty? I th- I well, it's it's a tough thing. I I I don't. I'm not. I'm not really into just like banning content creators. I know some people who who believe that, that they should just ban people. I'm not really into just like banning content creators. I know some people who, who believe that, that they should just ban people. Just the, the, the authorities just have to jump in more. Um, if you see a crime, um, and it's live stream, then they, they need to be prosecuted. The law just needs to jump in more, that's all. Just, just bring the law faster. Um, if you see people being harassed, you see a crime actually happening and then they could prove that. It, 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 this wasn't a bit, this wasn't a skit. They should be, I mean Johnny Somali is in a whole lot of trouble. I mean, uh, if you guys have been checking out that story, he is a live streamer that goes up international, goes into other places. That don't have the freedoms that America has, that have some stringent policies on how to even behave in public. And this dude is either harassing people, going to very sensitive culture areas and twerking. He is disrupting the harmony in a lot of these areas and he is stuck in North, oh, sorry. Maybe he would, he is stuck in South Korea and they may put him in jail just for the only reason is to be, because he's annoying. He annoyed people at work while he's at a restaurant pouring, you know, bowls of soup onto the table. Do not go to other countries and thinking that you're going to get the same level of freedoms as America where. If he did all this nonsense in New York City, he go, he gets arrested, they release him probably same day, not in South Korea. So I think a lot of that is based on the law enforcement needs to be stronger. When someone is committing a crime, whether they're doing it for the clicks and views, to prosecute him. Just, you know, stop, stop a lot of this nonsense, but uh, good question. Well, she's not here, so we're, we're not seeing any fights, which now we're just waiting to see who is employee um A is. And uh if they're going to be let go or not, so we'll definitely check that out. Yeah, definitely, I, 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 now, I know that YouTube, I think is a little stronger nowadays. So I think Johnny may be banned, so they're not, they're not streaming on the really popular stuff. I don't think they're streaming on Facebook or YouTube. They're streaming on other platforms that definitely allow more freedom to do crazy stuff. So, um, there's another platform, you guys probably not familiar, cause it's usually for the young, the younger people. Um, that it's called Kick. Now, there's no ads on this platform, it's just streaming. And the only way the streamers make money is through some um subs and like donations. There, there is no ad sense, so there's no ads, so there's no ads, there's no one beholden to tell them what they could put on or not. So when you go to Kick, it's tons of crazy stuff happening over there. Um, so a lot of these streamers go out there and they could do those crash out crazy stuff. Because the platform still keeps them on, while YouTube will be quicker to just to ban them completely. Um, Ozzy, Ozzy's, Ozzy's cool, I mean, yeah, I, he, he, he's, he's been a great supporter. I, I understand what he's going with. I know usually when, when you see um that word, I know it's a bad word, but Ozzy five hundred, he's, he's a really good, great supporter of the channel. Um, I did not know about the, the, that other case about the um R word. Ozzy, if you know that, email me that story. I didn't, I didn't hear about that. Uh, that's crazy. Uh, let me know, let me know, uh, was, let me know about that. Thank you, appreciate that. I, I don't have any law, let me know right now, let you guys know right now. I have no uh legal like education at all. Um, you know, shout out to Nate the lawyer, cause you know, he practiced law, uh obviously. But um, yeah, I did not know anything about that, that's crazy. I wonder if, I wonder if they still, are they still, I guess they still at the, they still discussing, what's going on? Hey, Tasha, no, you're, you're, I mean, it came right on time. We're still trying to figure out who employee A is and they have not finished the um closed session meeting. So we're all just kind of hanging out, just seeing what's going on and see who employee A is. I think a lot of people have a different. Um, guesses on who it is. I don't think it's Keith Price, it's definitely not Robert Hunt. So we're wondering like, who, what's going on, what's going on, it, you know? It's all good, Ozzy man, no problem at all. You're always welcome, you're always welcome to, to, to be and hanging out with us. Actually, hold on a second. Alright, cool. Yeah, so right now, he already pleaded guilty to a couple of charges. So he believes that he thinks he's just going to get a fine and he's going to go home. And I do not believe that is going to happen at all. I think South Korea is going to make an extreme example of Johnny Somali and he is going to go to jail. He is going to go to jail. And he is, he is not taking the, 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 the weight of this issue. I think he thinks, well, I was just, I was just goofing off, I was being annoying, I was pranking people and. You know, all the stuff you kind of could do in America where, you know, you don't see that much happening. This is a whole different world and he, I don't think he gets it. He, he got banned from Japan. Like Japan, he cannot travel to Japan because the, he was doing the same nonsense over there. So I, I, I think he just doesn't, he is not, he is out of touch of what's going to happen. It's going to be a big surprise when he is handcuffed and it's like, yo, you're going to your prison for a while, so. Let me see what Vivian's chatting about.
And then once I get that situated, they'll take it back off. Alright, I think we got action, y'all.
Alright, we're back, we're back. Employee A, who was employee A? We'll figure that out.
You said, yes, right. I put it in there, yeah, uh. Can I, can I chat? I don't know how to send a chat while I'm on this thing. That's so funny. Can I talk to people? I cannot interact with the chat. I don't think I had the full channel, y'all. I got a lot of messages. But it won't let me reply. I'm sorry, I don't know how to reply, um, the option that I'm. Live chat. Yeah, it's not giving me an option to type back to y'all. I'm sorry.
Trustee Wedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carwell?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett, Supervisor Hanyard, motion pass.
Alright, next item, action following closed session, item one.
I would like to make a motion to remove item one from the agenda, second.
Trustee Carwell?
Can you post mine?
Trustee Wedeman?
Yes.
Supervisor Hanyard, motion pass.
Thank you, you guys for being in my mind.
Related to supervisor's vehicle stipend, uh which supervisor has received for the duration of her term.
I would like to table, make a motion to table that to the next meeting, second.
Trustee Wedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carwell?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez? Supervisor Hanyard, motion pass.
Right, next item is trustees report.
I do not.
Alright, uh supervisor's report, next item. Uh, next item is public comments.
Dan Lee?
He's like, wait, would I go downstairs? What I'm doing?
Y'all have to excuse my low tech uh approach. I still use pencil and paper, so bear with me. Um, I couldn't help but notice that uh the attorney managed to get on Zoom's situation and communicate with us. And if our lame duck supervisor really cared as much as she claims to about the people of uh, over which she presides over. She could have made some attempt to participate in this meeting, so it just gives you an idea about where we are right now. In addition to that, she could have at least had uh sent the uh video from her victory party of February the twenty fifth. That she probably, she told everybody she was going to have. I guess that it's not going to happen either. But uh, so much for her for right now. Right now, I'm more concerned about the township. And I think that uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that now that we, we're going to have some reasonable people. All, you know, through all positions here in the township, also in the city of Dalton. Uh, that we can start reaching out to each other as villages and townships, and towns rather, to start getting some programs to move us forward. I'm thinking specifically of, you know, I saw some, some items about uh the grade level of, you know, some. Where our children are not reading and not getting, you know, the math scores up to par. And those salaries that don't match the achievement levels. That we can come up with something like a tutoring program somewhere, uh maybe in the whole township even. But cause you got, I, I did something like that for about two or three years back to nineteen, I mean twenty nineteen, I went through about twenty twenty one. Uh with ARP, and they have an extensive program uh all over the nation for tutoring children. And their main focus is to get the child before they get to third grade, before they start tuning out. So hopefully, we can get to something like that on the agendas of here and in Dalton. And we can start working, because that is the future. We have to have proficient children.
Absolutely.
We're gonna, all our children are going to fall behind the rest of the world. It's a global economy now. And they are spending much more time on the books and studying than we are here. And then also, uh that goes for the adults also. I don't think we spend a lot of time really paying attention to what's going on. So it's just, it's just a suggestion. And also, um, y'all, okay, with the citizens' comments, uh being first or last, either way, which is fine. Basically, as long as we were ahead of the lame duck person, that filibuster uh actually is not that big a deal. But I would like to see something put into the agenda where we could possibly submit questions during some of the discussions of issues. Because if we like. And, you know, forget something. And if we could have, maybe even two or three questions, that's a limited amount, you know, not to disrupt the proceedings. But if we can have our input put in during the, these meetings, I think it would be a lot more productive if we could get that done. And I did have a couple, a question about the uh, a couple of agen- agenda items. Emergency approval, I must have missed that. You had emergency approval on two or three items uh on that first page. Cause I didn't understand what that was. I saw the word emergency. I don't know if it's an emergency for you guys, emergency for us, emergency for everybody. But when I see that word, you know, I'm like, I have some idea what's going on with that. And I'm pretty sure that you are not going to tell us what went down back, back in the back, so I'll just move right on and I'm thanking for your attention. Oh, that was it?
But where do we sign, like, was it like, was it up here, downstairs? Do I, do I sign? Say your name, swat. Can you help us with the mic, please?
Yes. Yes, and she, yes.
Okay, well, first, I actually wanted to revisit an issue on the, on the agenda. Cause I'm extremely confused on what it means when you guys um omitted act or ten one. And took it off, so that, does that mean that termination for that employee is no longer on the table? I just wanted to really understand that, um, and also I guess accordingly why we, or why you guys tabled the next item. Um, just really wanted to have a better understanding of that, you know, wanted to, to, oh, thank you. Okay, sorry, that was awkward. Um, can you say your name, please? Sure, Alicia Hall. Um, so yeah, I was asking about the agenda item ten A, um, the termination of employee A. We don't know who that is, but kind of wanted to know why it was removed. Um, again, wanted to thank the trustees that do show up. I mean, it's just so obvious, you know, where do we stand, where the people stand. As, as a rela- as a relates to the supervisor and trustee Darlene Ray, who shows up whenever she's supporting Tiffany's agenda. And when that's not the case, she's nowhere to be found. Um, that's a slap in the face. Thank you clerk, again, um, for continuing to just step up and, and do the right thing. Thank you attorney. I really appreciate your input, your insight, your guidance. It's needed and it's appreciated, so thank you for that. I don't blame you for not being here either. Um, you know, it's just not the best environment. It's been proven, you know, um, well, it is now when certain people are omitted from the process. Um, Robert Hunt, you know, I don't mean to pick on you, but just realistically speaking, we'd like to hear a little bit more from you. And this, that's just being honest. As the finance guy, the director, we don't know, you know, if you're seeking to stay in this position, but if you are. Please be more vocal when it comes to the budget, um, or just any financial questions, even have a report. I'm not sure why the super, the financial director or finance person isn't on here every agenda to be giving an update. Especially when we have no idea where we stand with the finances. That should be mandatory. You should be on the agenda every single time, giving us some type of snapshot of what's going on financially with us. Um, Emmanuel, I'm going to go back to the whole thing. Where are these videos going? Uh, where, where can we see the one that you're recording tonight? Uh, we just kind of like to, to, to know, to, to have access to those things. I remember you were one of the main vendors that they were letting speak over three minutes and you were heavily advocating for your payment. It wouldn't be a problem if we kind of knew what we were paying you for and where those videos wind up. I mean, I did ask you in a sidebar, but I'm asking directly during public comment, where are those videos and how can we watch them? So, that's about it. Thank you, everybody. Please come out. Well, never mind, thank you. Anybody else to public comment?
Good evening. My name is Sharon Carter. I live in South Polyn. I've been a resident for uh over twenty years, about twenty one years. And I was asked the question, um, why do you come out to the meetings? Why do you go to all of these meetings? And my response was, I come to the meetings because we need to get involved. I can stay at home, on my couch, I can call my friends, I can perform, or I can be here. In order for change to happen, you have to come out, participate in order to affect change to happen. And that's why I attend, you know, come to these meetings. Um, the last meetings I was at, I heard a young lady said, um, we were pretty much assaulted. Um, because she was telling us she didn't have a reputation to look, okay, nothing to live for. Well, I do, and so, you know, she invited us out to the parking lot. And so I said, no, I'm not going. Uh, the videos have made it around the world. Which is pretty much embarrassing, the United States pretty much. I've had people call me and say, are you okay? I've had church members, family members, best friends, saying we need to come up there. Um, but we shouldn't have. Um, but we shouldn't have to handle things like that. We should have integrity. And I do. I have students who look up to me. They saw me on the news. They wanted to make sure I was okay and what was going on. And so that was just a sad case for that to happen, you know, for us to be adults to be fighting like it was. Um, I do have a question. Is there something that goes on when people do fight and you don't work here anymore? Are they allowed in the building? And how do they enter the building? Because I didn't feel safe the last meeting that only lasted eight minutes, so I was pretty glad that it only lasted that long. To see that that person entered through the back door. Did they get wound like we do? So, you know, I felt that they shouldn't come. If you're coming for business, you're residents in the Thornton Township and you need to take care of business, then you come here during the business hours. But during a meeting, you, you know, you really should not be here watching online for other people's safety. Okay, so that's pretty much all that I wanted to say. I would invite other residents, don't stay home and complain, come out. Um, I was kind of disappointed in looking at the election that took place in Dalton with all of the residents that lived there and not five thousand people came out to vote. People shouldn't, that place should have been packed. And I hope that this election will represent that, that we come out and we do vote. In order for change to happen, we have to be involved. There's nobody gonna get up and lead us anywhere. We have to get together and do this. And that's for the election that's coming up in April, is early voting now. Get up and go vote. Let's not stop sitting back, talking, and you don't wanna fight and carry on. Get up and let's make a change. And that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Can I just briefly address the board? Can I say one thing, Stephanie?
I just wanted to touch base on what she just said. And, um, when Kamal did come in that meeting, on the last meeting, you guys were telling the YouTubers that we couldn't be in here. And he's the employee that was let go from you guys for fighting. And he was the one that was one of the threats. And we, the resident, have not been a threat to her or her safety or security. So it was, it was odd that he was actually, actually able to be inside of this room when you guys tell everybody else they have to go downstairs. Like you have people that's on the camera right now that's downstairs watching. That, they're, they're not a threat. You understand? So that's, that should be changed the next meeting. Everybody should be able to come in one room for all personnel issues. Because we are not the threat. The threat was with Henry. The threat is, is not here anymore. So you guys should really look into that on the agenda item as well. And make sure that you allow everybody in one room, one place to handle the business. We should not be separated because of, of threat that's not here anymore. So that's all I wanted to say.
Includes, uh, public comments? Alright, uh, next item.
Yeah, I just, I know, I, I can't address everything. Just, I know this isn't typically what we do at these meetings, but since I have nobody here to stop me, I feel like I can address what I can. So the, the, the ones you had questions about, Alicia, for the, um, ten one, uh, there, there was a resignation. So there was, there was no need to move forward with that one. Um, and the other one, there needs to be some, some research done. So pending that research, it's tabled for number two.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And just even as a whole, I mean, there's, sometimes as trustees stand, there's either something ongoing or when it just comes down to there's litigation that's already engaged. Unfortunately, we just can't speak of it. Um, so, I mean, that's kind of, you know, where we're at with some of them. It's just, you know, we have no choice, but we cannot speak on it. So we don't want to put the township ever in any more jeopardy. Unnecessary, so.
Thank you.
Pretty much there.
I think, I think that's all I could address, just off the top of my head.
That's okay.
Mr. Lee, the tutoring idea is great. I do want you to know that once upon a time at our Riverdale building, we did have an after-school program. That after-school program offered one-on-one tutoring. I would hope that it would be safe to say that moving forward, those priorities may be put back in place. Um, but I love your idea of, of partnering amongst the communities. These are what intergovernmental agreements are for. You know, we, we spend your money wiser if we all work together. So thank you for your input. I think the tutoring is amazing and, and hopefully moving for, moving forward, the new board can implement those types of things.
Stephanie, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask you a question about the line program. Is it for just senior citizens? Do you have to make a certain amount or everybody get their grass cut?
There is an age and an income requirement.
Okay, I needed to know that. Yeah, okay.
And just piggyback off from, young lady said, early voting has started. Get out there and vote. Thirty first, April first is election day. Get out and vote.
We cannot wait.
Alright, uh, there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second?
Trustee Carwell? Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Wedeman? Supervisor Henry? Meeting adjourned, eight o'clock.
Alright, I guess that's over. So the, the, the employee A resigned. But before I leave, because I have to go walk a dog at nine o'clock at night, supposed to do it two hours ago, but I had this scheduled first, so, um, he'll be fine. Don't you find it a little interesting that it took twenty, thirty minutes to talk about someone resigning? If they resigned, when it just came back in five minutes ago? Or like as soon as you, you showed up, you looked at and the person quit? Did they had to contact the person? Maybe the person didn't quit, they quit at, on the spot? That's a, that was interesting. I'll just say that. Um, felt like it was more like a debate on what's going on. And then the person quit. I, that, it just sounded a little odd to me. But anyway, um, I think definitely was a more productive meeting, like I said before. It was a lot of housekeeping. It was a lot of, um, trying to improve the community. Trying to ensure transparency with the different audiences and the different policies. They've made some significant decisions on some of these matters, removing some of the, the, uh, controversial financial items. You know, trying to, you know, the idea you're gonna give bonuses to employees doesn't make a whole lot of sense right now. It's not after all the stuff that Henry has put the township through. Um, but we don't know who the, we don't, we have no idea who was that employee. No inclu, no idea. The person just resigned. So I guess, cool. I just felt a little odd that, um, closed session just took a while to discuss someone's resignation. Like, did they quit or did they quit? Um, but productive meeting, the kind of meetings that do well for the community probably doesn't really do well for YouTube, looking for the, the drama, looking for the, the, the action. But I think at this point, going through so long, for multiple years of this, uh, craziness, uh, I think it's a welcome addition. I do not believe, hey, Bo, we, what, we want, we want Bo. Calm down, calm down. Um, I don't think it was Keith Price, so we will know. We won't. I mean, I, I think eventually we'll figure it out. So, yeah, so, yeah, exactly, yeah, I, I mean, hold on, hold on, hold on. Um, yeah, I think, I think someone and, uh, uh, politics, they will, someone, someone's gonna tell me, or they're gonna let us know. Uh, what, what, wait, what, what, what you want, Bo? What you want, Bo? Get out of here. You want, you want everyone to look at you? No? Or now you're gonna run away? Oh, whatever. Um, yeah, yeah, he wants to get walked. He got, he got time for this stuff. Alright, tell, tell, what, what, what you wanna say? Okay, that's it. That's all you had to say. Okay, fair, fair enough, fair enough. Let me, let me show you guys his face before, before we leave. Alright, alright. Um, he, he, he wants me to move. He doesn't want me to like pat him or pick him up or anything. He wants to go outside. But on that note, guys, um, I think positive, I think it's in a great direction. Uh, Henry is, is done. Uh, I think that, uh, this is, is great for, um, the community. And we'll see what happens. Let's see if Henry drops a video. You know, she likes to drop these little passive aggressive messages and everything. But I gotta go, I gotta walk this dog. Thank you, guys, for hanging out with me.